This meeting is being recorded.
Goodbye.
Okay.
That's new. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. It's just past 7:00 PM and our meeting is called to order. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Edwards?
Not here yet.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Kotek?
I'm here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Commissioner Paulson? Commissioner Perez? Commissioner Staff?
I'm here.
Great. Vice Chair Tobias?
Here.
Great. Commissioner Varela?
Not yet, but it looks like Commissioner Edwards is trying to...
Yes, it does. Commissioner Edwards?
Everyone?
Great. All right. Emmy, Commissioner Robbins. All right, so I think we do have a quorum, so we can get rolling. Our next order of business is saying thank you to our vice chair, Commissioner Tobias, and I want to say thank you for being here. I think you said last time you've been serving since 2018 or so?
Yeah, it was six years.
Yeah, pretty good stint. So you've got a little bit of the history here going, and I should appreciate your perspectives and questions. I always learn a little something.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would anybody else like to say anything?
I enjoy working all the time. I think in a lot of areas that he did. Sarah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll say something.
You.
I just want to say thank you. I really enjoyed all the participation and the questions and the engagement. You know, you showed a great interest in the work we're doing and really appreciate your work.
I agree.
Ditto.
More importantly, I remember when Michael started, I think he was either seven or eight, and you provided some really good insight. Number one, you were a renter from the planning commission, so I do recognize that was a unique thing that's an important voice to be heard. But I did appreciate all the questions and also the fact that you obviously paid close attention to what we're doing and had the right comments and questions to ask us, so I appreciate it.
Would any commissioners online like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for welcoming me. Gosh, whenever I joined, it feels like it's been years, but I think it's only been maybe a year. It's been great serving with you, but I will definitely miss you over in Lacey. And yeah, wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I would just like to kind of echo what everyone else has said. It's been so great working with you. I've always really appreciated your questions and, you know, your commitment to the Planning Commission, and I just really thank you for everything and wish you the best of luck moving forward.
Much appreciated. Thank you all. I miss this, but I'm sure I'm leaving you all in good hands. I would like to think that, you know, I was told as a kid, you know, how do we leave a place better than we found it? So I hope that, you know, by the time I've been on the commission here, I can leave this commission and this town better than when I first started, so. I mean, you know, other than that little pandemic thing that happened right now, but, you know.
A little hiccup there.
Yeah.
You're here.
Well, thank you. What we thought we would do, and the folks online, of course, can stick around if you want, but we have, Brad has gotten us some cake, some refreshments. We'll do that after our meeting, so we don't have to spend other folks' time. Okay. All right. I don't want to cut anybody else. Did I leave anyone out? All right. All right, let's go on to, do we have any changes otherwise to our agenda? Okay. Any commissioners' reports? Okay, not hearing any. Brad, managers' report?
Yes, a few things. Reminder to the planning commissioners who will be here in November, the first meeting in November, according to your bylaws, is the election of the chair and vice chair. So I think we reviewed the requirements selection, if you, how much money you can spend, all those kinds of things. We resolved most of the complaints from last year's process, so just be mindful. In all seriousness, so if there are people, given that Commissioner Tobias will be stepping away, we'll definitely have an open position if Elizabeth chooses to continue or not to continue, those kinds of things, so.
Yeah.
Also, for the commissioners, I apologize, I'll be reaching out later this week to try to set up a time to speak to you individually. This is a check-in, and it's also a check-in in advance of the 25 work plan. So I'll just be looking for that. I'm looking for, you know, a half-hour, hour of your time. I can meet you wherever, however, do that. I've attached, again, the master schedule for the comprehensive plan update. It's the most current version until tomorrow. We joke, but things are shifting a little bit. The joint meeting that we will have with the city council on their first work session in December will cover both the work program for the next year as well as land use, housing, and development code, all in less than a half-hour. That should be interesting. The good news is we're making pretty good progress on the, working on the update. We had a good meeting with our climate consultant yesterday. They're hoping to have a public draft available by the end of the year. They've done a substantial amount of work so far, a lot of good outreach, and so I'm, we're looking forward actually to seeing what they do, because I have a suspicion that whatever they do, we'll try to mimic with our resources and our time as we go forward. We're also reviewing the lands for public purposes element right now, so that will come to you at the end of November. We have a conservation element that we're hoping to have ready for you on the 12th for your initial review, so I think we're making progress. The more we're getting into it, the more that we feel kind of, we just look at you with blank eyes or whatever, just pat us on the head and stuff.
I might note that, a couple things. The November 26th meeting, I think, is the week of Thanksgiving. Is it?
It is, I believe.
Okay. And, you know, if people have plans, just let us know ahead, and hopefully we'll have quorums still. I'm wondering, Brad, at that meeting, if, because the first December meeting is going to be our joint sessions, could we maybe spend just a little bit of time, if we have it, kind of prepping or thinking about things that we might want to raise with them?
Yeah, so also in your packet is our, the proposed planning commission meeting agenda. So on the 26th, we've got, the first item is the discussion of the 25 work program. It's essentially prepping for the joint meeting with the council, so I think that'll be a good opportunity. I don't, I haven't, the county hasn't responded to my questions on the joint plan stuff yet, so I'm not sure necessarily we'll have anything on November 26th on the joint plan, so we'll probably have a little more time than showing there.
Okay. That'd be great. Okay. Cool. Anybody have any comment on our schedule or work plan, master schedule? I love these because then I can go, oh, yeah, that's coming up, or I remember that now. Okay, so thank you for mapping it out. It's very helpful. Okay. Let's go to public comment. Do we have anybody online? Anybody join us? A little bit of...
It looks like we have anybody online.
Okay, nobody online, yeah.
We didn't receive any phone calls or emails or letters this week about...
Okay. Thanks for that. All right. Then let's move on to our eighth order of business, which is the Development Code Administration, ordinance number 02024-005. That's going to be an action item. We're done. All right.
Yeah, so the action that I'm requesting from the commission tonight's meeting is the setting of a public hearing on the ordinance for your next meeting on November 12th. We are, yeah, we're all, if we are, if you had your questions answered tonight, I think we're in good shape for that. So what I'd like to start off first, we walked through the proposed ordinance in the staff report in detail last time, and as part of your packet, I've included a draft of the ordinance. I'd like to just point out a couple things that have changed since you last saw it. The most important thing being an addition in Title 18, in fact, a new chapter called Chapter 1855, the Site Plan Review. What Site Plan Review is, if there is a use that doesn't require a conditional use permit or some other special permit, but it has, it's more than a single-family house or middle housing, so duplex, an individual duplex or individual triplex, those kinds of things. We have a process that we currently run that really needs to be codified, and what that does is essentially say, allows our planners to review a proposed project for all the land use-related things in Title 18, the zoning, the setbacks, the bulk and dimensional regulations that are part of that, the use, all of those kinds of things tied in with the landscaping plan, tied in with any critical areas that are required, and issue that as an approval. And so what this does is formally establish a permit type for us to do that. It's basically, what it does is it gives the applicant something to say, okay, I've had this reviewed, this is good for, I believe, 18 months with a year-long extension. If you disagree with the decision, it's an administrative process, depending upon whether it's administrative process, whatever, but it's either a Type 1 without, if it doesn't require SEPA, or a Type 2 if it does require SEPA. So there's a whole approval process as part of that. The, so what, again, the projects that would be covered by that would be multifamily, which is anything that's five units or more, any commercial project, any industrial project, or any institutional project, say, a school or a public office building or something of that nature, so.
Okay.
So I'm curious, based on your chance to take a look at the staff report and hopefully glance at the ordinance, if you had any specific questions for us as part of that review?
I have a kind of a, just looking at the strike-through version, where, just to make sure that I didn't miss something, where things just sort of maybe moved around and put in place, you know, like whole chunks might have been picked out but moved, they didn't go well together, like there's a big strike-through section.
Well, let me explain that. The areas in the ordinance, and I'm going, I'll make an example here, what, if you turn to page three, for example, the hearing examiner chapter from 2.58. That's an example of an existing section of the code where we made some very minor changes to it. We didn't do wholesale replacement. What we did, ended up doing for Title 14 is literally strike out the entire title and replace it with brand-new text, because ultimately, and this was a request from our legal group that when she started to look through it, it was pretty solid red, because it literally was.
Yeah.
You know, new stuff.
Yeah.
If you want to see what the old version is, it's available online, obviously, right now in an easy-to-read version, but the ordinance strike-through version is the entire title all at once.
Yeah.
Brand-new section ahead of it in red underline.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Okay.
There are, for example, there are two new sections when you're reviewing this. The Site Plan Review is one of them, the Certificate of Occupancy section in 1555, I think, or 56. When you read the ordinance at the beginning of the section, it'll indicate these are new sections. They're not in underline, they're actually in plain text.
Yeah.
So when you're reading through that, just be aware, not all new text is underlined.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
I didn't see anything that I had questions about as far as content. What I did see is a whole bunch of stuff that was taken out and put in and looking at the staff report, and things that were rearranged and renumbered and reorganized. Maybe you could briefly tell us what you, what changes you made between last meeting and this one that were substantive?
Primarily the Site Plan Review chapter, and you asked a question...
First that, and it comes in at lots of different places?
Yeah, the actual chapter is 1855 towards the end of the staff report and the end of the ordinance. All of that language is new. The references that we added in the text, primarily in Title 14, were just an addition. I think we included Site Plan Review already in there, but then we didn't actually have anything to point to. So what we have done is made sure that we actually have the permit detailed as part of that process. And I'm stalling for time because there was another big section that I can't remember that we added, and if you give me a moment, I'll...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm actually back in Title 14 in the staff report, 140810, there's just, I don't know if it was just reorganized or something.
Yeah.
Who was added?
So all of the, all of the, the entire title was struck out, and everything that you're reading is new text. There may have been bits and pieces that were brought over in very small amounts from the previous chapter, but effectively, all the chapters, all the titles, all the sections are new and reorganized. So from the purposes of just trying to explain what had happened and be clear about what had happened, this was the format that we wanted to present that in.
Yeah, we also have the table now with the permit types, so that's new, identifying the applications that we have at the land use reviews as Type 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then it, so having that table and then identifying what type they are, whereas before they weren't identified as a permit application type.
Right.
So that's all new.
Yeah.
And that's to help with the timelines, and our timelines are new.
With the legislation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, the one substance, the thing that I noticed was that, whereas in the first wording, it said that staff could do certain things, now what that got changed to is they could recommend those things, which are really substantive.
Yeah, there's a few levels of approval in the, in the new ordinance, and the approvals are either administrative through the director of community development, and then the definition of director says, or his appointee, so it could be the permit manager who signs off on things. And then, or the hearing examiner has the ability to issue the decision on Type 3 permits, for example. In all of these cases, either individual staff or the development review committee has, is the first body or first group that reviews applications and who provides recommendations to the final decision-maker, whether that's the director or to the hearing examiner. That's typically in the form of the staff report or the final approval documents, depending upon the level of the permit. So essentially, staff doesn't have approval authority on anything unless the director designates that person to have that authority.
Is this standard the way it's always been, or is this something that changed because of the legislation?
No, this is something that's really has always been. It's more of a making sure that we be very clear about that. So, for example, Title 15, which is not a part of this process, in fact, it was pulled out of this process, the building official is the authority for issuing building permits and so forth. And if there's a decision to be appealed or something, if his decision is the one who's appealed to the next, either hearing examiner, whatever their process is. So that's where, how that all works out. Okay.
Commissioner Travis?
So in Section 16, in the, like, in the code itself, the strike-throughs seem to be mostly in relation to the appeals, for the appeals process, you know, the previously where it said the code administrator shall approve, the code administrator shall review, it's been changed to review and approval process shall follow the land use permit application review in Tumwater Municipal Code Title 14. Can you tell us a bit more about what that, because I think we talked about it last time, about what sort of the appeal, the changes to the appeal process would be, but has that been, something that's already been approved or something that we're still working on?
No, it's clarifying the existing code. There are particular sections, like, for example, the Title 11 telecommunications section has a process for handling individual wireless permits and specifies, in the old code, it was referring to Chapter 1408, which was much broader than land use permits and brought in a lot of stuff that, to be honest, didn't really fit. And that's why we really made sure that when we're talking about Title 14, we're talking about specifically land use permits. Those are things that are specified in Title 18 zoning, or Title 17 land division, or Title 16 environment. Those are the land use permits. So we're not dealing with other things that had appeared in Title 13, for example, stormwater, or Title 11, which was the other stuff. So we wanted to make it clear that we were pointing to the right sections. There are certain things the hearing examiner hears that are outside of the land use permitting, and we wanted to make sure that all of those references were properly documented. So that was the big, big change, I think.
So correct me if I'm wrong, also, the way that it was structured, is it by application type, so then the appeal process for each of those application types, that's why we say reference this section of code for the process to appeal this type of application?
Mm-hmm.
So it's condensing all this big block of, like, Type 1 applications and condensing it to this is the process for reviewing it, and then this is the process to appeal these type of applications?
Yeah.
So instead of having an appeal section in each application type, which is what the previous code was, it was very, it was very long for condensing it by application type.
But is the appeals process changing at all, or is it just the reference to...
No, not really. Again, for anything that's been an administrative decision that the director issues, the appeal has gone and will continue to go to the hearing examiner. For hearing examiner decisions on things like plan unit developments and preliminary plats and those kinds of things, the next step up the chain is actually to Superior Court, and that's under the Land Use Permit Act, LUPA. But that's been specified, that's been the appeal process in the past, it's something specified in the state law, and that's something we're continuing as part of this process. The other section, and thank you, Terry, for allowing me the chance to review, review what I did and forgot about a week ago, is I updated the list of things that are required for a permit application. That's entitled in Chapter 1410, 1410, I believe. No, excuse me. The 1408010 land use permit applications. The requirement in state law now is that in order for us to make a determination of completeness, which is the next section in that, in that chapter, we need to ensure that any application has, is procedurally complete, meaning it has everything that we list out in the code. Before, it was a little more nebulous, so we didn't have to specify in detail, you need a site plan that contains this, 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 and this. We have to go to that level of detail to meet that standard. So when we tell somebody your application is not complete, we can say, it's not complete because you didn't include the legal description on your site plan. Okay. So what that does, what that means, however, is there are cases when all of this stuff is going to be required, like a preliminary plat that has critical areas and it's big, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's going to be required. Most of the other permit types aren't going to require this amount of information and shouldn't. So what is included in this section is language allowing the director to make amendments to this and issue what we currently do, which is checklists for each of the permits, saying, we need this, 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 and this, not this entire laundry list of things. But we needed sort of a tie-in to make that work within the code.
Are these checklist?
Go ahead.
Are these checklist things that are public record? I mean, they're on line?
Yeah, they're all online. So if you go under our land use, if you query permitting, each of the land use approvals that we have, all the things I just talked about, from a tree permit to a preliminary plat and in-between, there is both the initial application form, which is a one or two-page document, and then a checklist. And the checklist contains that list again of all the items. In the olden days, it contained the number of copies we needed, of hard copies we needed for each of those because they went to different departments. Now it's all electronic, so we don't need that, but we do have all that in, in the process. As part of the preliminary, the pre-application process for the development review committee, the development review committee can modify that checklist and request additional information or strike out and so forth. And whatever the development review committee says at the end of their meetings is what needs to be presented as part of the complete application. That becomes what we use to evaluate the application, part of the completeness review.
We've got to review and rewrite a whole bunch of stuff that we aren't even looking at here.
Yeah. I don't think we're going to have to go to extreme limits to do that. I think it's just going to be a matter of updating a few things, because we drew a lot of this stuff from what we're currently doing, and we just need to sync it all up. But yes, we're going to have to do some administrative updating, probably mostly to our main application form, because we asked for some very specific information that isn't currently included on the application, that we've discovered that we probably should have and ask upfront for.
Marks?
I'm fine with the poll committee, if you're fine.
I think we need a, we need a motion to get the action through, but yes?
Moved.
All right. That was a motion from Commissioner Kirkpatrick to set the ball rolling for a public hearing for November 12th, and...
Commissioner Tobias, I'll second.
Great. Seconded by Commissioner Tobias.
Okay, to clarify, the motion is to put ordinance number...
Oh, sorry. Better be clear, okay. So I'll just restate that, it's been moved and seconded, moved and seconded, that the ordinance number 02024-005, the Development Code Administration revisions, come up for public hearing at our next meeting, November 12th, 2024. All right. I think I got that right. Any other discussion before I vote? Okay, yep. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous that, go ahead and schedule the public hearing. Thanks, everybody.
We'll do that.
All right. Any other thoughts, Brad, on that? Shall we just go on to? Okay, our next meeting will be November 12th, but I think we need a motion to adjourn to cake or some sort of snack. Okay, our next meeting will be November 12th, but I think we need a motion to adjourn to cake, or some sort of snack. I'm not sure what the refreshment is exactly, but go ahead.
I've motioned to adjourn.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, that was moved and seconded to adjourn our meeting tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Everyone.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye, Greg.
Good night. Hope to see you next time.
All right, party time.
All right.
So you should probably end the meeting before you turn the TV off.
Thought about that.
It's like, still be recording.
Remember to log out, yeah.
Remote, give me the remote.
Know what the bar was for.
All right, now let's.
Now let's actually end the recording.